All right, this time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Council to order. And this time I asked, called upon Commissioner Puente, but I don't see him. Is Commissioner Puente with us?
No, sir, he's not on yet.
Okay.
Hold on, he's coming on, there he is. He's connecting. Commissioner Puente, can you hear us?
All right, Commissioner Puente, can you lead us in an invocation, please?
Name of the Father and Son and the Holy Spirit, Lord Jesus Christ. Lord, let us be the people to share it with those who thirst, affirmed by the servant leadership we witness in your Son Jesus. Let us walk in the path he has set, and let those who will follow, that our greatest passion be compassion. In your name, Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all, thank you for joining us in this video conference meeting tonight. And I'll ask the city secretary if there has been any request for citizen communication.
None, mayor.
Okay, no written comments submitted and no request for, to call in?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much, there being no citizen communication. We'll go on to item one, which is the presentation of proclamations. And the first proclamation that we have, I believe that we have our Economic Development Executive Director joining us. But we have, our first proclamation is a proclamation regarding National Economic Development Week. It reads as follows, "Whereas International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services and research, in-depth publications and public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality for their communities by creating, retaining and expanding jobs that facilitate growth and enhance wealth and provide a stable tax base. Whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses. Whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural, urban, local, state, provincial, federal governments, private and public partnerships, chambers and universities. Whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs in developed vibrant communities. Whereas economic developers work in the city of Harlingen and the state of Texas. And whereas since 1990, Development Corporation of Harlingen, also known as the HEDC, has been tirelessly engaged in the recruitment of new industry and the expansion of existing industry and the continued retention of business in Harlingen. The HEDC Board of Directors and staff strive to enhance the quality of life for citizens of Harlingen, and whereas the HEDC staff continues to maintain the highest levels of professionalism. Now therefore be it resolved that, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby recognize, May 4th through the 9th, 2020 is National Economic Development Week in the city of Harlingen. Remind all individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving quality of life. And probably never before in the history of our community will this organization be as important as it is now. So congratulations to our EDC team and all of our city staff who partners with them. So I would be handing this to Rodelle if we were live and in person, but he'll just have to accept it virtually. And, and thank you. Rodelle, is there anything you want to say?
Just wanted to say thank you for that proclamation and for the recognition. Our staff has been really, really busy the last couple of weeks and it's not slowing down yet, so we're glad to be of service to the community.
All right, congratulations, thank you. The next proclamation is proclaiming the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2020 is National Public Works Week. And we have another proclamation, which reads as follows, "Whereas the public works services provided in our community are integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste connection, water and wastewater. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim National Public Works Week as May 17th through 23rd, and ask all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved with providing our public works, to recognize contributions and public works officials to make health, safety and comfort, quality of life." So really do want to recognize our public works officials, they've certainly in the last 12 months have been working tirelessly, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, to keep our public work systems operating and improving them, especially since those floods of last year. Like them, for all the work that they've done, know that the events of the last two months have kind of overshadowed what they do. But what they do is vitally important and they're doing a fantastic job. So I believe Rodrigo has a presentation, has a short presentation that he would like to make, and I would hand this to you Rodrigo, if I were there with you, but we'll get it to you, Amanda will get it to you.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you so much, and I do, I do want to recognize our, our team, our guys, and men and women that... All right. And so it's just a quick presentation of our teams out there, working every day, they haven't stopped. May 1st officially became my one-year anniversary here at Public Works, and it's everything that Dan told me was going to be fun. I've had a spill, I've had a flood, I've had a fire, and now we're dealing with a pandemic. And I wouldn't want to do it with anybody else, but, but this guys that are doing it out here today, fleet maintenance and and our crews on the, on the field, they haven't stopped, they keep showing up, they, they know what's at stake, they have their families. You know, I couldn't be prouder of all the men and women that work for us, that work for our community. They really show what they're made of, and I just hope to continue to grow and with them and do more things. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Congratulations, it is, it's a great team, we have a great team and we're very proud of that team, so, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the, item number two, the approval of the minutes, and we have three sets of minutes to approve. I'm going to call all three of them. A, special meeting of the city commission of April 24th, 2020. B, a joint special meeting of the city commission and Harlingen Waterworks System of November 6th, 2019. And C, special city commission meeting of November 1st, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I think Frank got muted, you're talking, but you're on mute.
Sorry about that, can you hear me? On November 1st, special meeting, just a correction on the, on the voting, it says here, motion, I guess it's line number 14, Amanda?
Okay.
It says motion carries unanimously, just the correction that I had voted no on, on that motion, on that.
Okay, I have a recollection, I have a recollection of Commissioner Puente. My, my impression was to say he voted no. So with that correction, are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Very unanimous, our motion approved of the minutes as corrected.
Motion approved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Next item is the consent agenda items three through C, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Go move, Mayor, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, item four, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding on behalf of Harlingen Police Department with the US Immigration and Customs Enforcement Homeland Security Investigations to designate a task force officer to perform certain HSI duties. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is an update to our current MOU that we have. And with a task force officer on the HSI task force. And they deal mainly in drug trafficking, human smuggling, gun-running type of crimes. Important to note, they don't deal with any type of immigration crimes with, with this task force. So they do pay for overtime for the officer, that's accrued, and we get reimbursed for that. Answering any other questions you might have?
Anybody have any questions for the chief about this MOU?
Make the motion for an approval, Mayor. Second?
Motion second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item five, consideration possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city Harlingen Police Department to submit a grant application for proposed $57,650 made available through the Office of Governor Homeland Security Grants Division to provide additional overtime hours for manpower enhancement and improved border security under the Operation Stone Garden program.
Mayor, Commissioners, and this is an annual grant that comes up, Stone Garden, which focuses on organized crime, terrorism, violent-led crimes within our side of the border. And for salaries for the officers that are out there, salaries and benefits, and there's no cash match.
All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Almost, second?
Any, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item six, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Good evening, Mayor, and staff. Before we have a budget amendment, which allocates funds for awards, grants and other revenues and expenditures. For the current year, it amends the current year budget as depicted in Exhibit A. Exhibit specifically shows the specific line items that are, that are being amended. We do have $50,000 for COVID-19, which we are proposing expenditures. We are also showing the public that, as you see, $31,000 in grant revenue and offsetting expenditures. The Health Department with $135,123 in grant revenue and related expenditures. And the Library with $400,000 in grant revenue and related expenditures. So that's what we're proposing tonight, and we recommend approval.
Anybody have any questions?
Motion for approval? Second?
We have a motion and a second?
Would you like me to read it?
Who made the second?
Victor.
Thanks, all right, any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Would you like me to read the caption?
Oh yeah, you're, you're right, Allison, please read the caption.
Sure. In ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget, the city of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, total budget revenues will increase to $79,558,534 and total budget expenditures will increase to $85,891,77, respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Now, is there a motion?
Go move, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seven is consideration and possible action to prioritize landscape beautification projects at gateways into our city and authorize the city manager utilize the $270,000 grant funding from the Governor's Community Achievement Award and construct the improvements for priority project number one.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon, if I may, I'm going to share my screen here real quick to walk you through the different projects that have, that have been identified or previously identified through a priority list project listing. The, as you mentioned, Mayor, we are the recipients, or we have been selected for the Governor's Community Achievement Award for this 2020. Back in March 30th, we got a notification through the Keep Texas Beautiful Association, which is an affiliate, an affiliation with TechStop. And so the award that we are receiving is a $270,000 grant. And that's under a category or category for a population of 65,000 to 90,000. And it is meant to recognize communities' environmental programs in the areas of community leadership and coordination, public awareness, environmental education, beautification and community improvement projects, litter prevention, solid waste management and the litter and illegal dumping enforcement efforts. A big thank you, I want to pause and then give a big thanks to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Association or board members, the countless volunteers that we have through them, military, Marine Military Academy, who is a strong partner in the efforts that we, that Keep Harlingen Beautiful does, day in and day out. Harlingen School District and obviously also our city staff, both parks, public works, boat enforcement, code compliance staff and so forth. So if you all recall, back in 2016, 2017, we did also receive the Governor's Community Achievement Award. That led to the beautification project at the interchange. This is an aerial photograph after the project had been completed. And it's, it's, the, the project at that point ended up costing us about $333,000. And that's some additional improvements that were involved with the project, including the illumination, LED lights that we installed at the, at the roadways, both, in both directions, on the Harrison and Tyler Street. So the purpose of us coming to you all is that, again, we, back in April of 2015, this project, this interchange project was selected as part of the six priority projects that the city commission had approved. Project, beautification projects within the TechStop right-of-way. And so this was the one that was done at that point, and we had five other projects, and I've been to run through them really quick. First one is the interchange, not interchange, but the intersection of Commerce Street and Business 77, they're by the HEDC and McKelvey Park. We have a rough estimate of $271,000 for that project. The other, the second project is the, the median on Washington Business and Business 77. That's the McDonald's right here in the middle of the median area there. That has a project cost also, rough estimate, $271,000. The, all these projects are landscape-type projects, some, it involves some landscape pavers and some raised medians and erosion control type of improvements. The next project is the island that we have there off of Harrison and 21st, 25th Street. The, there's a Stripes convenience store just to the west of this point right here. This is where both Tyler and Harrison kind of merge as it goes east to, towards Ed Carey. This project has a $99,000 cost estimate. The next project is, fourth project is the Ed Carey intersection with the Expressway. We have a beautification project here that involves both sides of the, of the ramps or the abutments, I should say, and the, at the intersections, you'll have some greenery on both sides, and it kind of extends into the commercial properties on both, on all four corners. This project's estimated at $270,000. I should say that this project does not involve, or does not include the illumination. We can include that, which if we, if you all select to go to this project, we would add approximately anywhere between 90, well, about $75,000 to $90,000 to this, to this cost. Last but not least is the, is the intersection of Spur 54. As you all know, Spur 54 right now is being improved, obviously it's a very old picture, we, Bass Pro Shop is not shown here yet, but we do have some proposed improvements there. I believe our parks director included the illumination cost of $72,000 here. This project has a cost estimate of about $294,000. So again, the, the, the grant comes with certain conditions that we have to meet and follow. It is a TechStop-funded project. The, we're, we're expected to build the improvements, landscape improvements or beautification projects within TechStop right-of-ways. We must meet their standards. We need to provide water and electricity to the project. TechStop coordinates or manages the project. And also, after the projects improve, the improvements become the responsibility, or the maintenance becomes the responsibility of the city. So just in summary, we have five projects that we want you all to consider. Again, this is more presented to you as a cost estimate, not, these, these dollar values are subject to change. We, really what we want from you all at this point is direction as to what location you want us to, to focus on for, for this beautification project. That's all I have, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Carlos, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So the last time that we had one of these projects, TechStop, top of the money that they gave us, they also had it in trade of these. Have we checked to see if this one's?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm happy to report, we did have a webinar with them this afternoon. And they are not making that assessment this year. There is not an administration cost, from what was told to us this afternoon at the webinar.
Okay.
In addition to that, they're also going to provide us with landscape design services at no cost.
Okay.
Hey, what, what are the wishes of the commission?
Mesmer has a question. So I see the costs on the page right now. Who is to bear the costs?
Well, the, the funding will come from that grant that we are receiving, the $270,000 grant that's been afforded to us through the Keep Harlingen, Keep Texas Beautiful.
Okay, so without us spending any money and the additional money you're asking us then to direct to you, where we should spend $270,000 of state money, do I understand that correctly?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, great.
And the money, and the money, the award can only be spent on state right-of-way. So that's why we're only picking projects that are on state right-of-way.
Okay, and one last question that I have on the Ed Carey Spur 54. Aren't both of those slated for tour rounds?
We have proposed that through the MPO, those, those fundings, the dollars have not been allocated to the project. It could be several years on the road.
Right, so if we, if we spend money, it's possible that we were, we're going to have to redesign it once those intersections get redesigned?
Possibly, yes.
So may I ask a question, Carlos, do you have a, like how you, you, the staff is prioritizing these projects?
So the...
Because Victor brings up a good point of, you know, that construction project, if there's going to be pending construction on Ed Carey, that might exclude that. But as far as the other, the other projects, do you have an order of importance that you'd like to see done?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, the, the order that I presented them, and maybe I should have disclosed this or mentioned this earlier, is the project one through five is listed in the order that the city commission approved back in 2015. So project one was the next one on the list, which is Commerce. Now, on Commerce, we have also, and it's, it's very preliminary, it's schematic, but we thought that we could maybe convert this area to some sort of turn, a traffic circle. But that's not nowhere in the radar for TechStop at this point. But if we were to do a traffic circle here, we could improve the access to the McKelvey Park, facilitate that access so that vehicles are coming in from Commerce or even some Sunshine Strip and could easily access McKelvey.
I may ask another question, Carlos, are these improvements anywhere that you can say that, that they'll also improve the traffic accidents or, because I know that the one in front of McDonald's is really bad, you know? Sometimes they, they take a right instead of a left or vice versa. But, but is there any data to say that if we improve these, it'll improve the, kind of like what you did with AutoZone down 13th and 77, or we, we cut off that street and it actually improved the traffic there? Or as far as the number of accidents?
He, I can't say that that's going to be part of the scope on the, on the project itself, but once we have TechStop, because TechStop's going to be part of the development of the, of this project. If additional signage can be incorporated into the, into the medians placed strategically in the median, then maybe that, that'll improve the circulation. But, but if that's an issue, with that's something we should be looking at.
What, no, what my question was, is by improving these with the landscape and the stuff, does it almost naturally lend a, a visual for the, the traffic flow? Because that's what AutoZone, that's what AutoZone did, when you all covered it up and they actually put greenery and stuff, people knew not to cross over, right? And I see that kind of in this design, by improving those islands and whatnot, that it also, it may, it may improve the traffic. But I was asking your opinion, because you're, you know, you're an engineer.
Yes, sir, it could, I mean, it could, it could, it could create that, that tunnel. It could create those barriers also to kind of screen, especially at night when you start going across from east to west. That's a long stretch, and so it'll, it'll create some of that. That's a long stretch, uh, and so it'll, it'll create some of that, that screening effect, uh, on, on the vehicles that are, uh, coming across each other.
Yes, sir.
But right now that we're working on Spur fifty-four, um, and where they've redone the road, they're making improvements and we're trying to make that order to the destination park and the convention center. Uh, I think right now the landscaping would be appropriate project for project five, uh, to allocate that, that funding, you know, to improve that area. We're trying to improve and make it look nice, trying to bring, uh, people from the outside, especially since the hotel should be up and running by this August. Uh, beautifying that area is going to make a big difference. Uh, I think it'll make it nice, it'll make it attractive, just like the other intersection, uh, by the expressway. Uh, I agree with the, uh, one in, in front of, uh, the other areas that were covered, uh, project one, two, and three. But those already have landscaping as we speak right now. Uh, and I think we need to concentrate for to beautifying the areas that we're looking at. And I think project number five would be one of the projects that we need to look at, uh, to make improvement there, to make it nice.
So Commissioner, uh, on this project, Spur fifty-four, uh, has a ten-foot sidewalk, uh, on the south side of the right of way. It's going to traverse and it, uh, I believe it terminates on T Street at this point. Uh, the improvements on the, uh, there is some, some, uh, improvements within the, uh, the, uh, the intersection itself. And also we have a median that's incorporated with landscaping and, and, uh, uh, shrubs and, and whatnot here. So, uh, it, it brings us to this point, but I mean, you're right, it, it, uh.
Carlos, Carlos, is that the Old Horizon Hotel? Is that an old picture or is that just?
Yes, sir, this is an old, that's an old photograph.
Yeah, you went deep for that picture.
I have a question, if I may. Are, uh, are drainage impacts being considered, uh, specifically there on Spur fifty-four? You said earlier that Tech Start was going to be working with this. Are, are they taking that into consideration? Because I, I, I like the idea, but my main concern, obviously what happened in the drain or the, the planning that we had the last time, are they taking this into consideration? And will that help improve the drainage?
Well, the, the drainage is, uh, is incorporated in the road improvement project that's on, uh, under construction right now. Uh, and, and again, it takes you, the, the limits of the project is T Street. And so there is improvements being made to this portion of Fair Park.
So there, so yes, the, 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 the drainage, they are looking at that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I, I think, I think we've had a lot of good conversation, but I think if we go back to our priority list, I think, uh, my recommendation would be sticking to our original priority list, which is to do the Commerce and Business seventy-seven.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, because my, my, my fear of those two intersections, the Spur and the, and the Ed Carey is that, you know, as, as, as those turnarounds and stuff get remodeled, I hate to throw money away. I, I, I kind of like your idea that you had about Washington and, and, uh, and, uh, uh, Business seventy-seven, but you know, the, the chances of, of us getting a turnaround there at McKelvey Park, I think are going to be slim and none at this point. And I, I, I think we need to redress up that, you know, that, that area used to be really, really nice and they, it's gone over a couple of generations. Are, are we gonna, now, I remember we experimented with AstroTurf. This would be a natural landscape, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we, uh, we did, uh, did, uh, do a rough estimate also with AstroTurf and the, uh, it, it, it gets up there at, uh, the dollar value around a million dollars or so. To do this project.
I mean, I, if I could make the motion, my motion would be that we, uh, use priority number one.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any, any other discussion? I do, I do think that, uh, while, while we may want to adopt these as priorities, I think the Commissioner Nellerosa's point is well taken, and that is we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to put a bunch of money into this, into this project and then have Tech Start come in and tell us they want to put a turnaround there and tear it all up. So I think we want to make sure that whatever we, if we, if we keep that as the priority, we need to be real sure that, that that's not going to happen. Uh, okay?
The, the priority, I don't think that that's on the project number one, though.
Yeah, the turnaround is project number one, which is Commerce and Business seventy-seven.
Oh, okay, I, I, I didn't hear that.
So on this list, number five is the, is the one that Nellerosa and I were speaking of, Spur fifty-four? Or can we change this to roundabout? As far as priority?
Well, okay, so I, I don't, I'm not real sure what your question, but what, what I was stating, you know, Mayor, you, you, you're making a good point there. The, the two that are on here that have the least impact are going to be the priority one and priority two, but what you're saying, Mayor, is may, maybe we really need to take a long look and a deep look to make sure we're not going to end up with a turnaround in five years? Around about?
I, I think I just, before we commit and say, yeah, we're going to spend all this money there, I just want to be sure that, uh, whatever we do would be compatible with whatever this turnaround might, might look like. You know, or, but you all can make, you know, there's a motion in a second to accept the priorities as they're, as they are presented by the staff and that this Commerce and Business seventy-seven is the first priority. I'm just saying, please, let's make sure that whatever we do there is compatible with, you know, and, and if, and it turns out that maybe this isn't compatible with the, with the turnaround concept, maybe we need to bring it back.
Yeah, Victor, do you want, do you want to amend your motion to, to, with the contingent upon there's no re, uh, um, future construction that might hinder the project?
Well, that's what I was thinking, what I was thinking was is maybe we ought to say, uh, project one and, and that staff needs to do a deep dive with Tech Start just to figure out where we're at truly. And if, and if, and if do hit that this is something that's feasible because of the MPO and everything changed, uh, ma- maybe we ought to make, uh, available number two as the next slot in case one doesn't pass.
Yeah, I, I was going to suggest that we could possibly go to priority number two. It'll have just as big of an impact and we don't have the proposed roundabout in that area, so we don't have to worry about tearing that out down the road.
So are, are, are you, is your recommendation just for me to resend my, my, uh, my motion and go straight to project two?
I, I think project two will have equal amount of impact and, uh, because of the comment from Carlos and, uh, Carlos had been pushing for a roundabout to have easier access to McKelvey Park, I would, I would suggest that maybe we, we prioritize project two first and work on project number one down the road once we have funding for a roundabout.
Okay, so, uh, uh, Richard, do you want to take back your two and I'll take back my one? I'll read, I'll redo the-
Just amend, uh, Victor, why don't you amend your, just amend your motion then?
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, Commissioner Uribe can amend this second or agree, agree to that.
Okay, so, so then my motion is going to be that we do, uh, priority two as our, as our first choice on this, uh, project.
Okay, Commissioner Al, he's amended his motion to project two to be the priority and Commissioner Uribe, do you accept that?
Yes, sir, I was, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. The priority two will be, uh, our top priority. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, um.
Thank you.
Item number eight is the consideration of possible action to change the primary and alternate appointments from the City of Harlingen to the Technical Advisory Committee of the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Organization.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, we had appointed, this commissioner had appointed Huel, our prior special projects director, uh, as the primary and Gabe as the alternate. Huel has moved on to another municipality. So I would recommend to the city commission that we appoint Carlos as the primary. Carlos Sanchez is also a professional engineer and Gabe as the alternate for the technical advisory committee to the RGV MPO.
All right, is there a motion to appoint, uh, Carlos Sanchez as the primary to the TAC? And Gabriel as the, you know, Gonzalez as the alternate?
Go move. Carlos, how do you feel about that?
I'll second Mesmer.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, it doesn't, does it matter how Carlos feels about it? No.
I'm just kidding. He looks very excited.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed, motion carries. All right, item number nine, it's not like Carlos doesn't have anything else to do either. All right, item nine, consideration of possible action to approve the preliminary ranking of the insurance consulting firms, professional consulting services or insurances to assist in researching, developing, and implementing an employee's self fully funded health insurance, life, AD and D, employee assistance program, vision insurance, dental insurance, and cafeteria plan and products, and windstorm insurance, and to authorize the city manager to negotiate with the highest ranked firm.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, uh, we went out for, uh, requests on this and this year we added windstorm as many of the areas that they're going to be consulting on. Uh, the RFQs were, uh, sent out on March twenty-ninth. Uh, we received four RFQs by the deadline, which was April the twenty-eighth. The consultants that, uh, submitted, uh, proposals were First Financial Group of America, Valley Risk Consulting, Arthur Gallagher and McGriff, Seibel and Williams. We had a committee that reviewed the RFQs. The committee consisted of Gabe Gonzalez, Ace Yip, Robert Rodriguez, our finance director, Elena Castilla, risk management coordinator, and, and myself. And after reviewing them, the qualification, uh, grading the RFQs, the one that came out, uh, at the top was McGriff, Seibel and Williams, followed by First Financial. Uh, it is our staff recommendation to, for the manager to negotiate with the highest ranking firm, which is McGriff, Seibel and Williams. Uh, we've been using McGriff just for information since I think two thousand and four, with the exception of one year, and they've still do have done a very good job for us.
Okay, is there a, is there a motion to approve the staff's recommendation and authorize the city manager to negotiate with McGriff Seibels?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions. Uh, Efrain, I know we talked earlier in the week, um, we, we're doing this because, uh, where did the, we're looking at a potential seventeen percent increase in our, in our coverage, correct?
At this point, it's too early to know. We know that the industry has to be, uh, six percent. We're still waiting for our, our figures to come in as to how our benefits, how our claims versus, uh, premiums are going. For now in the budget, I'm projecting a, about a fifteen percent increase. But I'm hoping we can do a whole lot better and in the past, we've done a whole lot better by having the consultants help negotiate, uh, our, uh, our insurance.
So I, I, I talked to Shepherd Walton and King and they said that the lady that, or let me ask you this question. Are, are we looking at, uh, getting away from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, uh, entirely or, 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 uh, the, the man's going to consult and look at different companies?
So Commissioner, the, the, the item before us right now is, it's to hire the consultant that'll help us put the packet out for insurance providers. But this is just the consultant that'll help us.
Okay, so, so let me re, let me rephrase the question then. If we're not going to get away from, because I, I know we've gotten away from Blue Cross, Blue Shield prior in the past and that was kind of a really hiccup because there was nobody able to get insurance at the hospitals because of network or however, um, I, I, I would like to see what the actual number is and that number's not going to come out until July. We have until October to look at the, the renewal's not till October. Uh, but, but the way it was explained to me from, from, uh, Shepherd Walton and King is that we have external factors and internal factors, right? Our internal factors is, you know, the number of times our, our employees go to the doctor or how seriously or how not, you know, how often we're using the insurance. That affects the rate. But right now, it's more importantly, it's the external factors that we do not control and that's across the board and there's so much uncertainty. I would, um, prefer to wait till July and hopefully the, the, the state and everybody else is opened up and we're in a much better position. And that we're not, uh, maybe we'll have, we'll get a better rate already, which, which, which will up with our leverage of, of the renewal of the contracts.
But again, this, this item is for the consultant that'll help us put out the packets to receive proposals from insurance providers. This is not the insurance proposal yet.
No, I, I know, I know that, but I'm, what I'm saying, if we're going to spend thirty-seven thousand dollars or whatever the cost is, uh, um, and, and maybe it's a potential five percent increase, right? Uh, it may not be worth it to, to hire the consultant if we can just renew our current plan. Now, if in July we see a double digit or a huge increase, I can see where it's beneficial to have the consultant come in because he just did this review, what, a couple of years ago? So I don't know what other recommendations he would do any different because it really hasn't changed so much, the climate, uh, between them, right? And, and, and I think we have a good agent. I think we have, uh, 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 you know, it's, again, the, what I, what I, I was being told and what I personally do is it's, it's these external components that hopefully, we're going to be in a much better position in July. Uh, uh, we'll, we'll hopefully be more open, more, more fluid. Uh, and, and we, we won't get dinged or, or on a potential, what could be, because there's a lot of uncertainty right now. Look at what's happened the last five, six weeks. You know, it's been a lot, so, uh, I would, I would, I would like to-
So, so, so Richard, are you suggesting we do not hire a consultant?
I, I would, I, I would wait and, and not, not, not at this, not until we know what the number is. Uh, uh, uh-
We don't know what the number is until you go out for insurance bids. We have to have a consultant to do all the groundwork and all the labor for us.
No, that, that, that's only if you're going to change your plan. Okay, and, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield has not given a number to Shepherd Walton and King to say it's going to be X amount of dollars right now. It, it's all speculation. Uh, to speculate that we're going to increase by fifteen percent now, if that comes true, absolutely, we probably need to get somebody to leverage it. But if it's a five percent, a two percent, or even a no change, then we may not, we, we may not have to do it. And we have plenty of time. It's not, there's not, uh, uh, I don't think there's a, a deadline right now that we have to face. Uh, I, I, I would, I just really would like to, again, uh, we have an insurance in place right now that we, we're going to have until October. Uh, we have plenty of time to hire this consultant in the future if we need, if need be. But I really would like to get that number from, from our, from our agent and saying, hey, look, and because they've been, we've been doing business with that agency for a long time. I kind of trust what they, what they're saying and what they're doing, right? I mean, they, they, they know what they're doing. So, uh, it's almost like a don't panic right now. Let's, you know, let's see what that number is because I think everybody's going to be, uh, involved in that. But, but either way, at the same time, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the representatives in McCafflin, whatever that lady name is, they're all going to have to deal with the same lady. You know?
Efrain, how long does it take to go through a process of seeking proposals for insurance? Signing the employees up for the insurance? How long does that take?
That's what I was going to explain, that, uh, normally we have to have something in, in place by, by August because we do our enrollment in September because we pay a, a month ahead. That means that we must have finalized enrollment by August. But even July, we have, don't have a consultant, it'll basically be too late to get a consultant and go out for proposals.
Yeah, Commissioner, we did, let me, Commissioner, we, we, this happened once before where we, um, I believe it was back in about two thousand and nine or ten, where we waited and because of the wait and because of the diff, and because we switched, because we ended up having to switch to get a better rate, uh, the signup period resulted in some of our employees actually being without insurance for about a week or two. I remember an airport employee who was dying of cancer came to the city commission and, uh, made a very, uh, heart wrenching, uh, it was awful. Let me tell you what, that was maybe the worst, one of the worst days I ever had on the city commission or as mayor, uh, having that gentleman, uh, tell us that we had really screwed up by delaying this process. I would certainly not want to, you or me to ever have to stand, sit there and stand there again. again and listen to somebody tell them, tell them that we didn't, we didn't act quickly enough to get their insurance so that they could have their medications. It was a very, very, I mean, it was, it was the absolute worst thing I've ever had to sit through, because we did, we did, we screwed it up. I don't want to do that again.
Like I said, Shepherd Walton and King said we had to July, that the numbers would come out in July, the renewal process was in October, and the consultant would take a couple of weeks to do his thing, so, but, I mean.
Does Shepherd Walton and King currently work for us?
Yes, sir. They're agents.
Yes, those are agents. And, and they've been our agents, I think, how many years now, Effren, you said 15 years?
That number of years, I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, a long time. They've been a long time, and that's what I was, what I was just trying to get at is, if we're not going to change the product, I, I get it, and I'm, I'm not in favor of employees losing any benefits, I've said that before, but I'm just looking at, if we don't have to spend that money right at this minute, I would prefer not to, just because we may not have to use that right now, but because we just don't have a number.
Commissioner, just for information, we've included Windstorm on this one, so they're going to assist us also in securing bids for, for Windstorm coverage due to the increases. We may be able to do better by going outside of what we normal, what we have.
But, but that's a separate cost, correct? That's not a cost with, with the health.
But it's, the way the RFQ was put together, it's for all of it.
And, and this is a shared cost between the Water Works and the Airport, right?
Airport, Water Works, and for the health insurance, even the Housing Authority also contributes towards paying this.
So consultant. Okay.
All right. Any other, any other questions or discussion?
Just one more quick, Effren, I didn't quite understand the answer that Dan, or the question that Dan asked you, as far as how long does it take for them to come up with this, their analysis? I know you said we've got to make a decision by October or before October. It's got to be done by August, so are you saying it's going to take them from now to August to make this?
No, it's, it's not just the analysis. They'll actually help us prepare the, the bids if we go out for bids. Then they'll actually, when the bids are received, they'll actually review the bids, and they'll also negotiate for us with, with the insurance companies, and they also, they help us maybe modify our plans to see how we can get a better rate, so.
Effren, that brings up a good point. Can, could they come back with maybe like three recommendations, or their top three, and let the board decide based on the qualifications they ask for? Or even top two?
They, they always make recommendations, and it's up to the commission to.
Yeah, but, but could we ask them to expand it to say, because it's always hard when it's at work, it's that one, one person, you know, if, if we have the option of looking, because everybody has strengths and weaknesses, right? And, 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 and they're ranked a certain way. If, if, if we would allow the, the, the consultant to say, because they're going to do all the research, right? They're going to contact all these people, and, and, and maybe they could come back and say, you know what, here's the top two choices we came up with.
And they'll usually rank them, so you will have those options?
No, but, 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 I mean, not, I wouldn't rank them by one, two, and three. I would say these are your top candidates. Here's the strengths, and here's the weaknesses for both.
The other, the other thing, the other thing the consultant does is, is he, is he explains, he explains the proposals. He, he lines them up side by side and shows you what, what you're getting in the proposal and how the proposal differs. And to me, that's the real value in having the consultant, because he understands how to read the policy, understands how to read the policy. And Spur, these are, you know, obviously pretty complicated.
And they're very separate from, 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 they're not tied to any, any of the agents or anything. It's an independent person, or independent company?
That is correct, sir.
Right, yes. He's not the, he's completely divorced from the agents.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions, then.
Commissioner, I don't know that we answered your question, sir. Did we answer your question?
Yeah, I kind of got the gist of it, just but one more, because I didn't hear, what, what are they charging for the, what's their fee, Effren, or Dan?
We negotiated that. We, we do have a budgeted amount in, in the budget. What's the budget?
We budgeted $30,000, but of course, that's our, it's up to our portion this year, might be a little higher, because it includes a windstorm, so, but we will share those costs with Water Works.
Oh, okay. So that $30,000 will be divided between the three of us?
Well, Water Works, the $30,000 was we budgeted, and hopefully it'll be within that amount. If, if it were to exceed, I do have, we can adjust the budget with some of our other line items to make up for it, because it's more than worth it to get this consulted.
No, and, and I, I agree with your, your choice, but my question is that $30,000, is that going to split up between us, Airport Board, and the Water Works Department?
Right. What, what do we, yes, sir, what we do is by the census, by the number of employees, because we have like 800 employees with all three entities. We're the biggest entity, so we'll pay the bigger portion, then followed by Water Works, a small portion by, by the Air.
That's fair.
It's per round, okay. Is there a, is there any, any other questions? Is there a, is there, is there a motion to?
Some motion.
Staff's recommendation? Do we have a motion?
I have a first and a second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Item 10 is board appointments. Does anyone have any board appointments?
I have none, sir.
Okay.
None.
I've got about 10 of them. I'm just kidding, Mayor, I don't have any.
All right. All right. Victor?
Sir.
Al, Commissioner Mesmar, Commissioner Doro, so nobody has any. All right, no board appointments, so that we reached the end of our agenda, and therefore we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for physical distancing, and we'll, hopefully, we'll be able to get back together here soon. We're adjourned. Good night.
Good night.